Dams in there, okay? Now, the problem is, is that the, the obstructions are on the, I think it's a either two-foot or four-foot drainpipe that is directly under the road. That road, that drainpipe, all of that is owned by the city, okay? If we don't, it's already, uh, many years ago, it washed out once already and the city had to repair it. I wanted to bring this to your attention to keep from excessive expenses being incurred by the city. Whether this falls on, I don't believe this will fall on the landowner, okay? Because that section where the road is and the easement associated with that belongs to the city. So, someone needs to go out and look at this and either clear that line so that water can drain out, or right now, it's, the water with the rain we've had is almost halfway up to the road. We get another six, eight inches, nine, ten inches of rain, something like that, which prediction of rain is, is pretty high right now. You're gonna lose that road. And the last time this happened, which like I said, was many years ago, we lost the road in probably about two days of rain running over the edge and back, back cutting the road.
Is that close over to Baker Street? Cause someone called me in reference to, uh, over on Baker Street with the, uh, beavers. The, the apparently, the, the piece of property that, that lion's fur is, that person's passed away and it's-
No, this is a-
Beavers are building dams over there too.
Yeah, no, on Sunset, this is where the storage shed is, where the storage, storage buildings are. Uh, once you go in the road, it goes down like this and then turns. And, uh, what was supposed to originally be a dam that was designed by, by my wife's uncle, um, obviously the city took owner of, ownership of the road. That's when they dug it and put a big drainpipe in there. And it's like I said, beavers dammed it up and, and I hate, I don't wanna see the city incur any expense, unnecessary expenses. That's why I brought this to y'all's attention, just to close up kinda thing.
Mr. Kraus, is, is it the Beaver Dam that's causing the problem?
The, well, Beaver Dam is probably about, um, ten to fifteen yards back, okay? But what it looks like is that Beaver's gone down and, and almost created a secondary by plugging up that drain. That's my presumption. When I go, when I go to the edge of the road and I look over, I cannot see past the crown of the, crown of the road to see what exactly is down there. And now, if it's, the Beaver has plugged it up, you can't, you wouldn't be able to see it anyway because of water passing up the road. Well, I mean, the beavers need to be removed. Problem is, the only way you can remove them within inside the city limits is either trap them or shoot them with a bow. Unless either the city gives special disposition for someone to actually hunt them.
He's looking for Beaver males.
Not me.
Alright, well, um, I will talk to the street department tomorrow and have them go out and take a look, see what needs to be done. Thank you. Next on the agenda is, uh, Councilman Van Der Willems wants to discuss sidewalks and budgeting work sessions.
Mayor Blaiver, I would like to, um, ask that other works down, um, evaluate sidewalks and, uh, that we see close to get them repaired. We have quite a few that, uh, are crumbling or looks like maybe they were dug up at some point for repair or water or maybe several others, I'm not sure. But there's quite a few out there that really are hazards, especially for people who are trying to join more and they're jogging on sidewalks. So, um, you know, I guess it's not just Broad Street. There's some, uh, some other sidewalks that need as well. So, I would like for us to evaluate those and get close and see what it costs to get them repaired. And I know that budgets are coming up sooner rather than later and, uh, July or May here very quickly. And there's really not a whole lot of time before our next budget is, um, going to be coming in. So, I would, I would like for the council to think about possibly starting budget, um, work sessions towards the end of February. Uh, I know that some of us have training that we have to get to first part of March, but if we could schedule, uh, maybe the first budget work session sometime in the last week of, uh, February or maybe, uh, around the first part of March. And, uh, if possible, I'd like to have the department heads, uh, attend those so that we can get departmental goods as well. So, if we could, uh, I'll look at our calendars and maybe Tuesday night come up with a, a good date. We can set that up.
Based on our budget experience last year, I think that's a great idea.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Who's the Van Der Willems, I asked you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On talking about that, what did they work on? Could you name the streets that they're on?
Well, there's street coming down, uh, around railroad down here. It's, I'm not sure if it's actually part of railroad street. There's some empty areas. And I know that out here on Broad Street on the part on the other side of the street, that one was never done. If you walk out through there, they're definitely crumbling. And there's some that, um, are down on the farm of Broad Street. Uh, also, I would like to have the, um, sidewalks evaluated on, on first, second, third streets, seventh street. Uh, eventually, I would love to see us, uh, putting new sidewalks in, uh, over on Eighth Street across the railroad tracks, uh, once we, we get to the point where we, we might be able to evaluate that with our budget. But as of now, uh, I'm, I'm asking if we could have Sam just check all the sidewalks in the area and any other thing you can be in disrepair, get, what, give us guidance.
Yeah, I know there's some over in East Stadium and the Holiday Fields subdivision that have, uh, they've gone away, those have gone, you know, they didn't last very long and they're, they're crumbling.
So, definitely, any, any sidewalks that are disrepair is not any particular location. We can just get, get a look at them, mark them and, uh, get close to see what it would cost to get them repaired.
Sam, we've been doing that in-house, haven't we? Little section, dig out a section, repair it and there's some significant cost savings when we, uh, do, do the sidewalks. But I don't, you know, I don't know, we'll have to see, um, what kinda price we get from contractors and how much it would cost us to do it.
Well, certainly if it's more cost efficient to do it in-house, I would look at those as that. Uh, I just like to start moving before we get them fixed.
And of course, if the public has areas that we're not aware of, you know, let us know, we can evaluate them. And as everyone knows, once we get some audits done, we might be able to get some grant, grant money to do larger portions. There are some parts of town, uh, that don't even have sidewalks that, you know, we could consider if we had grant money. So, we don't want anyone in the way.
What's, just a quick question, what is, what's the status of the, uh, what's the status of the audit? And what progression rate are we at?
Well, they just give us another list of about fifteen items that they, uh, so, we're still tugging along. Susan has been working very good, she knows, you know, all that, has provided them quite a bit. Uh, we thought after they got those items, then we'd be six weeks out. I mean, I got a, her, later yesterday, um, uncoffined on everything that she gets. And the requests came from the auditors for about fifteen more things that we need to get done. So, they are, they are doing their best and Susan is doing her best to keep up with them.
Is that for the final audit that's due or, uh?
No, it's two thousand seventeen fiscal year.
Okay.
Now, eighteen, nineteen should go a lot easier because she's already organized those files behind us. Um, so eighteen is done. She's putting nineteen together while keeping twenty twenty current. So, once we get over these couple hurdles, it should move faster. As soon as we get twenty seventeen done and it's approved, we can apply for some grant money immediately because, and I believe some L make funds. Uh, with that, I believe we can do some roadwork. In the meantime, we're gonna have to do what we can, some of the in-house, um, of those in. Um, next on the agenda is Mary Williams.
I'm gonna forego this, um, I, I'm still waiting for some information. So, I'll, I'll just reschedule when I have what I need.
Mr. Mayor, I wanna take her time, but, uh, I got a question for you. Nothing to take away from the sidewalks, because that's very important. But look, one of that piece potholes in the city limits, and, and you know the particular one that I'm talking about? You know, it's six foot wide, four foot deep. It's right across the railroad tracks before you get to the, that highway.
Eighth Street, yeah.
It's a major, major, major pothole that is almost causing wrecks. Cars having to, you know, get around them to get onto the road, Georgia Highway.
That lady beside you told me the same thing.
Sir?
That lady beside you told me the same thing.
Said you listened to her?
Hey, wait a minute, I said something today about the same thing.
She's not getting any special compensation.
That's where I got my DUI, you know, that one that wasn't for real. But that was part of the reason.
Right there.
Yeah.
It could, it, that one is so big though, it really could, it could tear.
I mean, that's the most major one there is that I know of, but there are quite a few more.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, uh, post that rug to do that one. And you're gonna have to be concrete, I mean, you just can't co-press that, you can't push it right out of the big trucks.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure we're gonna have to wait for a couple of decent days to get some of that water out of there, otherwise it's-
We're gonna wait for this rain.
It's not gonna stick, I mean.
You don't need a Band-Aid on it, it needs to be fixed.
Yeah, that's why you have loads of rubber there or, uh, cure.
We're waiting for a small part to fill in the gap. And then when the water drains out, then we just cover it up. We all are, but I appreciate it though.
Can't you say that was strong?
It, it, but with the wet water that's laying in there and, and then nobody sees it and then of course they hit it, uh-
Well, I'll talk to Ms. Mayor and see if I can get something done.
No special compensation, I don't care who she is. I can say that.
Mr. Parker?
Yes?
I just have one question about Beaver Dam or the beavers. Um, it was said that there's some building going on, subdivision or something over there. The other thing is you have to look at, is there runoff? Is there runoff also causing the problem? Because it sounds like they're maybe short, short to retention ponds. I know, I know the Beaver Dams, um, cause the issue, but you, you also wanna make sure any, any areas that they're building, houses and or subdivisions, that their, their runoffs are directed away from certain areas also.
That's above the, uh, the, right.
The land, the land itself is, is owned by the development, okay? The, the ponds that are there are there with, are, I, is my presumption, is they're established retention ponds, okay? The two that are, the two that are existing are their, their drainage retention ponds. They're quoted green space, okay? As it was originally engineered and designed. The, uh, the other one was actually just drainage, alright? Where the water drains from, it doesn't just drain from the land that they own. It drains from the water tower, from the water tower down, across, across the property that mine is four, seven, two. The property that's next to me, um, heading west, it drains across there, goes across the bottom, then drops through, uh, down around Sunset. And then where, uh, we used to live, which is right there at the corner of the, um, of the open, I wanna call it a pond because it's not a pond, it's merely a drainage area. All the water rushes in there. What water doesn't rush in there crosses the road and drops in on the other side. And where that house sits down in the lower section, it crosses through there and gets into the stream in that direction. The other water that comes is from where the, if you come south from where the, uh, storage shed is and stay east of, uh, Lilian Way, that water from there comes around, crosses, uh, crosses Lilian Way and then drops into that same drainage system, sys, system area and then drains through there. That's why the, that's why the, um, city originally came in and basically took the road and put, originally there was a six foot, I mean, excuse me, a six inch drain overflow to turn that into a pond. Then you had a six inch drain that was through the street. The problem was that was not enough drainage to relieve all that water. And that's when, that's why it started running over. That's when the city came in and said, okay, there's not, this is not gonna be a pond, okay? If you, if Mr. Ellington had decided to build a pond, he would have, pond, he would have had to build a new dam further away outside the, um, outside the easement range of the road itself. That's, again, like I said, that's when the city came in and put the big culvert in at the base of the, at the base of the road. So, that is merely runoff, not runoff, but existing runoff drainage, not from construction that has, that has taken place. I mean, I've lived there, I've lived there for thirty-two years, so, in that same section.
I'd be concerned, I understand two places that goes across the road. You know, that can cause erosion on roads as well.
But what, the problem you got is that the people who originally, uh, people that went in and originally, uh, requested to build there, got the permits and did everything like that. One, they put in substandard sewer, okay? Substandard sewer pipe, which the city has already gone in, evaluated the pipe, saw that it was bad, made the company that purchased the land go back in and rebuild all the sewers. And I don't know if they've been rechecked, but they have been rebuilt. Uh, the other thing is that the roads that were put in, those were also substandard and they're crumbling. So, um, I would presume that the city's gonna require, before they'll even consider, uh, taking the roads, they're gonna require that the roads be rebuilt. So, it was, let's put it this way, the man that originally was the, the builder, obviously the city shouldn't have been doing business with, shouldn't have done business with, in my personal opinion. But I think the new people seem to be moving in the right direction. Because we had good contact with the people that were, uh, were doing the work on the sewers and they were very professional. They were very, um, we watched them lay the pipe. They, they put the gra, put gravel down, they made sure they had a solid base, so there wasn't anything shifting. They did a really good job.
Well, I know Jordan's been involved with that and he's been keeping me abreast of it. And he said he, he basically was the reason why they failed it.
That's correct.
Watched the camera going through and, uh, then they tried to put the-
Rabbit.
Yeah, and it hang up. And he said it's not gonna pass, so, uh, he did fail. Uh, now, I don't know if he's been back out to verify it.
I don't believe he has, I don't believe he has. I'm not gonna say he hasn't, but I don't, I don't think they asked him yet.
Tomorrow and I'll, and I'll ask him, but I didn't know that they were done with it, so.
They were done, they're done with a certain section of it. I don't know if they've done the area back by the, uh, Lilian Way extension. I don't know if they've done that yet. Uh, there's still gravel out there, so they may not have completed all of the work yet.
And then the day I was out and I saw there was still gravel piles, so I figured that it wasn't and I talked to him about it. So, I will, uh, talk to him again tomorrow and he's done it in the morning, so I will check on that. Uh, and also, Sam will check out that, that drainage problem, so. Alright, anything else? I believe it was the executive, so.
Part I know is disposition or acquisition of the stuff.
So, we have a motion here of executive.
I'll make a motion during the second session.
We have a second. All those in the table.
That one's the way I am. Because our subject is underwater.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. Every time it rains, uh, yeah, we have, everybody yard rains in my backyard and over my stuff. So, we have our camp party, um, I can't do laundry, I can't do dishes. We had a little breeder yesterday. So, I heard you, you know, I wash some dishes. We did our camp party for the second round. Looked at the double paper, same. It's back up. That's how we know we can't use anything. So, Archie likes to chase a tennis ball and I usually whip it to the ice. I have to go through certain areas because he would want it. So, I, I don't really want it. So, we, I throw it like from here to the table and he, it packs full galloped and he has a stop. I look at him, I'm like, I don't have to throw it for questions. He, we were not gonna put it in there, cause I had just given him that, like, two minutes.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, so in Florida, they can get all this stuff. Normally they're for at least one, yeah. Except for, uh, we, we had such a cold house on it, it was, it mattered each other this time, but other parts of us.
Then we leave next day and it's like, I just do my business.
So, that's the one thing we do get about this, not many.
Well, Katie, Katie even had a place she knew, uh, we invited on each puzzle. Yeah, and it was about half, uh, probably quarter of the price and only worth more than that.
So, we're really crap, yeah, where there's like a little trench to clean it up. And clean it up for her. We had to come out and clean the trees up. And bushes and then the family can get, uh, cleaning it out for him. It should pull it to the next, uh, share, but you're supposed to rob that.
And you had to do that for a day. And we mowed it and we weed whacked it and we actually planted it till we killed it. And it was like, then that back yard was just a bunch of mud, but we, but then, you know, we got the trees altered now a little bit better. And we were able to, it was just around.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's hard to understand the population by half. And I had my dogs out back and I was just, I was always rolling.
I got boots that go up to your hair.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yes. Yeah, and we, we killed quite a few companies there now.
Yeah, I got a few big ones, like he's gonna come in and take it down. Cause we have a fence and then we, our property goes back here. So, we're not gonna, uh, can't, uh, plant some, so we give us, which means that's-
Well, you know, twenty, we had to clear that bit. The growth that they just like, but all it does is hold normal.
It does, but it does.
And we, we're mad as hell.
We're trying to get out the water.
Cause it's not fair to be, so.
Yeah.
Well, I want your grant, you know.
I took it, it's something to do with it. The last two classes, who learned that last class?
How was that classes in the school? Cause it was a tradition, I mean, never.
Eddie was more of a problem.
Yeah.
Well, he, uh, any of the same. Parking, that's totally.
But, you know, I mean, but they, 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 they're one of them. It's like, oh, you can do fantastic. But they, 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 they're on every movie, my, or, and, and some, I mean, trying to make everything so that it's just-
But he can't do that, he can't do what, like, wood, they, they usually get you to hog them.
But that's probably, and where that, that's, I hope.
At day, at night. We got Bill, sir, down at National Park here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they, they, he's really, the two of them, I'm sorry.
If he lets a man, I said, who rest up?
And when they switch classes, they all move.
Have you been in that, uh, in that, uh, in that bill yet?
I do, like, we need to, instead of kids going this way and they, they, I don't care if your class is here, you have a shortcut. You have to stay in that direction.
I like going to school.
Y'all go in there? It's a gift shop.
Because, because of like peer pressure and like kids, you know.
It's right here, you know, for the alleyway. Right here, yeah.
That's what it is.
Yeah. It's an antique store, uh, my cousin, uh, who, uh, who had, uh, although there's every upstairs. But you go in there and you can hear.
Primarily like I'm just.
Yeah, it is open for babies. You look at it for different kinds of things.
I just think kids are.
Right down here. Go down, go down that alleyway.
It's like a cross.
No, it's right down there. You see the back of the building right here and the, the one is part of this one and the other part is very. Right there, right.